Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of Peter's Council of Council to order for Monday, July 11, 2022. Mr. Lauer will...
Ms. Shannepell?
I'm here.
Dr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Here.
Mr. Schigl?
Present.
Mr. Coles?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roscoe will not be here tonight.
More as for the pleasurable reasons?
The pleasurable reasons to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the council meeting held June 27.
Still moved.
Okay, any comments, concerns, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six, nothing. Next item will be special reports. Peter's like damn, as you all know, I requested Mr. Lauer to prepare this report as I was starting to get questions that I didn't, I had to dig back through emails and files to try to find their answers to the questions. I thought with three new council members it'd be good to have everything summarized. We're all on the same page, so I'll turn to you, Mr. Lauer.
Yeah, and I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes version, and I'm going to turn it over to Mark to fill in. But in 2012, the state of Pennsylvania began a process of attempting to address their concerns with regard to earth and dams. And so at that point in time, there were about 1,000 dams in the state of Pennsylvania that were determined to be deficient in some way or another. One of the things with regard to this dam, the deficiency has to do with the capacity of the spillway. And at the time, the maximum precipitation event that it was to be designed around was something that was far in excess of what we believed to be reasonable. And with the help of Representative Marr, DEP went back and looked at that calculation and actually revised it. The impact of that revision is still that what would be required to bring this dam into compliance is a massive amount of work. One of the things the council did was appropriate funds for a study to be done for alternatives for the, for addressing the deficiency of the spillway. That report is complete, and it's in the docket, and it provides for a number of different That report has been submitted to the DEP, and the DEP is going to be working with us to tell us what it is we need to do to bring the dam into compliance. Our preferred method of bringing this in compliance is to armor the dam, which in essence creates, takes the breastwork, which is now grass, and turns it into something that's capable of having water pass over without, at the same time, jeopardizing the dam structure itself. All of the, all of the solutions that are in the report are expensive. They're between $4.5 and $5 million is the estimate for them to be done. The one advantage of armoring the dam, it has, will have the least impact on, on the aesthetics of the lake. The, the depth of the water will remain the same. The only thing that people are going to see is that, that grass that you see on the, on the breastworks will be then turned into something that's impervious, so.
I don't know, is there anything you want to add?
There was more than Cliff Notes, Paul.
Okay, it was extended Cliff Notes.
But I, I don't have much more to add. I mean, you know, as council will recall, hopefully, back in November last year, we had a workshop, and we discussed the dam, and I gave a lot of background, I won't go into that. Just to carry on more with what Mr. Lauer said, you know, when we had our workshop last fall, Rizzo International, our consultant, was in the process of putting the Alternatives Analysis Report together. They'd identified five feasible, you know, alternatives. We had asked them to eliminate the, originally eliminate the armoring of the breastworks because based on what we were finding out, it was just going to be prohibitively expensive. But the more we got into it, and the more we, we understood how that alternative in particular has the least amount of impact on the lake itself. I mean, the, the breastworks will look quite different, but nobody cares about that. It's the lake and the recreational purposes of the lake is what's important. So we asked Rizzo to revise their analysis, include that as an alternative. They've done that, so we have six alternatives. We sent that report, they reissued the report in May. We sent it to DEP for their comments and input. We're hoping that, you know, through some discussions with them, they, they allow us to pursue that alternative, but I still haven't heard back from them. We sent it to them, you know, six weeks or so ago. I'll, I'll continue to call them to try to get updates on where they stand with it. But the one thing we don't want to do is charge forward with an alternative without, obviously, their blessing with it. So that's kind of the next step, is kind of the back and forth with DEP and the review of the Alternatives Analysis, refining the alternative. And then once, once we've agreed on what the alternative is, we can move forward with full-blown, you know, engineering and permitting. Paul did not mention, we, we just applied for a grant for engineering and permitting for the dam. It's actually a grant from FEMA. It's convoluted. It's a federal grant that each state has to submit. Long and short of it is, we submitted it to DEP last week was when it was due, so fingers crossed on getting maybe some money from the state to at least explore the chosen alternative and start the engineering and permitting in 2023.
And Mr. Schigl, I know one of the questions that you had asked in your email was, you know, what have we done with regard to our state representatives? And where I think they're going to be of most value to the township is in seeking funding eventually for the solution. So certainly Representative Mahalik, Senator Robinson, as well as Representatives from Guy Resenthal's office are all familiar with this project. And, and, you know, to the extent when we do things like make this application, it's actually the application's to FEMA, we let them know so that they can advocate on behalf of us. As much as I would like to think it's the logic and reason of these grant applications, many times it's the politics that helps us move along, so.
What is the amount of the potential, sorry, what's the amount of the potential grant?
Well, we, we estimated the, you know, engineering and permitting to be around $600,000. I think the match is 35% if I recall. So our contribution was in the 200,000s we were asking for and the 300,000s from the state.
And until we get to a point where we identify what the nature of the solution is, and we begin to engineer it, it will be near impossible to make application for funding to actually do the work. So like, for instance, this grant that was available through FEMA and FEMA, there is money in there for construction. There's only $20 million across the entire country for construction, and this, you know, this one dam is 4.5. But they won't consider a construction grant unless you've engineered the project. They're looking for projects that are ready to be built.
And what is the timeline for this?
The, who's in control of the timeline right now is DEP in terms of review of this. The, the dam division is actually fairly small, and like I said, the, the amount of dams that are in similar condition in the state of Pennsylvania is enormous. So a lot of this is going to get driven by them. I, I would be shocked, and I don't know what you think, Mark, but I'd be shocked that we hear anything back from DEP before the next year, even the end of next year. You know, if you look at this, it's, when we first got a notice from DEP was in 2012, so we're, we're out in a decade already.
But until then, the status quo remains?
Yes.
And the point that we didn't cover here, Mark, that I find to be the most concerning is the design storm criteria that this spillway needs to be adopted to. And it is 16?
17.5 inches of rain in a two-hour period.
In a two-hour period?
And to put that into context, the largest precipitation event in western Pennsylvania was Hurricane Ivan at 6.5 inches over a 24-hour period. So, you know, when you had that rain event, that spillway not only was able to handle it, there was a lot of freeboard in there that took additional capacity.
And I lived near there, and I actually was there monitoring, you know, the progression of the storm, but...
So it's never overflowed over there?
No, it wasn't even close in that situation of Ivan. And this, this design storm is like triple, the worst condition that ever...
Yeah, right. Which, if that happens, you know, pretty much all gone, right?
Well, yeah, I, I would think the whole township would be underwater at that point.
This is the line that I keep using, that when we get that rainstorm, the least of our problems will be this dam.
The dam will be good with the rest of the town.
We've gone.
Have another place to camp out.
Now, Mark, is that the standard for all earth and dams in Pennsylvania, or is that, did they come up with that for this dam?
Well, it used to be, you know, when we originally were lobbying for them to change the PMP study, the Knoxville Precipitation Study, our design storm then was like 33 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. And that was just the standard for western Pennsylvania. What they did was, to their credit, they, they redid the precipitation study, but now it's a lot more focused on where you actually live and the size of the watershed. So in other words, like if you can kind of follow what I'm saying, if, if you have a dam the size of the Hoover Dam, and there's tens of thousands of square acres, or square miles of drainage area, you know, you'd have to have a storm cover that entire drainage area and rain, you know, for, you know, a day to really impact that, that dam in the way that they want you to study the spillway. When you're dealing with a small watershed, you know, you could have like a flash storm occur, and since the time it takes for a drop of rain to get from the furthest area down to the dam might only be 45 minutes, that's all you need is a small, quick event for, for that to trigger the maximum flow of the spillway. So when you're dealing with these small watersheds, this is a large dam in a small watershed, that design storm, like the, the total duration of that storm shrinks. So while 17.5 inches of rain sounds a lot better than 33 inches of rain, which we were previously held to, the net effect was zero. It's had no effect. The, the design flow over the spillway is actually the same as it was 10 years ago when we were originally looking into this, because the duration is much shorter. You know, if you had 100 inches of rain over a month, you know, you'd barely get any flow over the spillway. But if you had 10 inches of rain in an hour, the spillway would be ripping, you know. So that's kind of the, the thought process there. It's, it's standard, you know, hydrologic engineering principle, but the, it's less rainfall volume, but over that shorter time gives us that maximum flow over the spillway that we have to design to, so.
But when they come up with these numbers, I mean, there has to be some basis for them. And when was the last time, well, when was, in the history of mankind, that there was, you know, 17.2 inches of rain falling? I mean, you know, short of, short of Noah's Ark and all that, but I mean, when does that ever happen?
Yeah, you're asking the wrong question.
I understand. I'm not asking you for answers, Mark, I'm just pointing out how ludicrous it is.
I could forward you the link to the DEP's report, and you can read it. If you ever have, if you ever have insomnia, you can read the report.
I did see on TV, I think there was something recent in Tennessee, and they got a ton in like a very...
It was actually very similar, Frank.
It was very similar, and I mean, it was pretty flooded, but I mean, Tennessee terrain isn't probably the same as it is here.
Well, it's probably dumping out of the Smoky Mountains. I mean, yeah, if you're in the Smoky Mountains and you get a rainstorm, you're going to get 17 inches in two hours, because it's coming from like 8,000 acres.
We have a couple of questions in the audience, I guess.
Yes. Yeah, I was going to say, if we want to inform you of public comments or...
You need to come up to the podium.
Okay, is it time for public comment, or is there still some? On this item?
On this item.
If your comments are on the dam. Clearly, I haven't been here before.
Yeah, and if you could give us your name and address on the tablet, so the secretary can get it.
You don't need to, oh, you're going to ask him to write it?
Yes, we're having a problem lately with catching names and addresses. I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
So I can't use this to write notes? Okay, yeah, I know, this is great. I, I've had some questions about this, and I won't waste, waste any more time getting into why this dam means a lot to me, but it goes back to things from high school, to things from first dates with my wife, who I'm now about to have four children with, to the fact that part of my father's ashes are in that lake. I'm there quite frequently, almost every mor- excuse me, almost every morning. And it was only me posting something on Facebook that someone in the comments started saying, hey, did you know that this is happening, and now it's out of spec, and it's inadequate, and there's this huge thing going on? I didn't know that, that's my fault for not being involved, but now I understand it. And I'm trying to understand the chronology to what exactly you were just talking about, because it seems like we had something that was somewhat fine. I understand there's been some issues with the dam. It looks like there was this new, this consulting group called Applied Weather Associates. I think that's a group that the DEP used, right, to do this analysis in 2019? And that's driving a lot of the basis for these new numbers? Is that correct?
They prepared the, the report.
Yeah, it's authored by them, it's, they have all their disclaimer language like you'd expect out of any engineering report, and...
Careful, there's a couple of engineers on this panel.
Yeah, I'm one too. I hope no one is offended by the fact that we use disclaimer language on reports. But to use a pun golo upstream from this, how do we know this is reliable analysis? I know this was done in fairly recently. I, I tried looking them up, seeing, I'm sure, like a credible group, but what I was expecting to find was a whole pile of peer-reviewed, neutral scientific literature showing that we've gone through massive validation, robust analysis, therefore we're going to change all this criteria overnight and take something that was fairly in good shape, and all of a sudden it is radically out of spec. So that happens essentially overnight from an analysis standpoint. I understand it might be a decade before we repair this. But what did we, did we do anything?
It won't be a decade before, I don't think it'll be a decade before the repairs are, are, are...
Mandated, I think it's probably.
That's fine, I'm saying the, yeah, the analysis changed overnight.
But the fact of the matter is, the original, the original calculation was actually challenged by the township, as long with a lot of other dam owners.
Yeah.
And what you have is this new analysis, and, and I, I don't think it would be productive on, on anybody's part to be insisting the DEP revisit this, because they've revisited it once, and I don't think they're, they're likely to do, do anything with it. I think what we need to do is to come up with a solution for the dam that works and find funding to make it possible.
I just wanted to correct, clarify something. Nothing changed because of a precipitation number. Like in, I think it was 2011, the dam safety regulations in the state of Pennsylvania changed. And what they said was, in a high-hazard dam like we, it's high hazard because if it, if it breaches, there's potential for loss of life and loss of property downstream, so that's how the state classifies high-hazard dams. There's 781 high-hazard dams in the state, so there's quite a few. And we're not the only people that got this letter, pretty much, you know, a massive majority of the high-hazard dam owners are in the same pickle that we are. But what changed in 2011 with those regulations was the design storm that the spillway needs to handle. It was changed to the maximum probable precipitation. So whatever that number was, and like I said, it was 33 inches in a 24-hour period at the time, whenever we got that initial letter in 2012, you know, that's what we were bound to try to, to study and to, and to rectify. And there's, the dam is in great shape. Like, I don't want anybody to get the impression of, oh, man, we, we have a problem with the dam. The dam's in great shape. It's the spillway capacity specifically that the DEP is, is saying is inadequate. And it's only become inadequate because there was a change in the regulations in 2011. So change in the regulations, we're now bound to increase our spillway capacity to handle the probable maximum event.
Yeah.
I think they got so much pushback from the high-hazard dam owners in the state at that time, that it was like, we're going to revisit what defines the probable maximum precipitation. That's when they hired, hired Applied Weather Associates, and they redid the study.
Yeah.
And I know, I, I know the, the firm, Applied Weather, either from Colorado, I think, they've done Ohio's study, they've done tons of these, done these state studies. So, you know, with respect to, do we agree with the study? I mean, I don't think our opinion matters. It's, the DEP has accepted the study, and there's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah, because when I saw, it's 178-page docket, I think that's obviously read, I don't think anyone did, but I tried to glance through a few parts of it, and it seems that what also changed after that study, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it went from the 33 to now the, the two-hour window that you have to meet this new criteria. That did change recently, right? That wasn't back in 2011?
No, yeah, that was, that was as a result of the study, and the way we do the study now is...
And that's why I put all the emphasis on the study, is that seems to be the one where we went from, things are somewhat okay and manageable.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, no.
It was the same.
It was the same.
Yeah.
In 2011...
The same pondering no matter what design storm we had, yeah.
Be quiet. The 2011 ruling changed the flow over the spillway criteria.
Changed the design storm.
And the two-hour versus the 24-hour status really didn't change the capacity to design of the spillway.
Correct.
The original number was over 24 hours, but it was 30, 32 inches?
33.
33 inches. And so when you, when you applied that to this dam, you ended up with an efficiency that was the equivalent of what you now have, based upon the two-hour storm.
We were hopeful that the, the new PMP study would help us, and it did help many high-hazard dam owners, just didn't help us because of the size of the watershed. It's such a small watershed that the way that hydrology is studied...
Is the price that the large increase in the cost of what it was expected to be, at least this is one of the user parts, I think it was expected to be much cheaper to meet this obligation.
No.
No, no, the, the, the size of the, the augmentation of the spillway was, would have been the same regardless of what that criteria was in 2011 or what it, what it is now. The basis above which it's required is different, but the, the net effect was the same.
That's wild, and I must be not understanding the docket, because it was something about in Rizzo where it says, we, we calculated this volumetric flow rate, but no, 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 you guys are supposed to be doing it according to this new spreadsheet, which created a 5X increase to what was expected from the original analysis. That's what I'm reading, straight from whatever it was.
And what that is, is when Rizzo did their initial submittal, they did not do it on the basis of the, the two-hour storm. They did it on the basis of a longer storm. DEP corrected them, saying, hey, our new criteria, you have to look at the two-hour storm. And when you look at the two-hour storm, its effect is the same as the 24-hour storm in, in, in 2011, I guess, or 12.
Yeah, I guess I'm understanding why I see that change of this was like very surprising and concerning, that it had a 5X increase on the volumetric flow rate, the expected volumetric flow rate. It sounds like this was significant, that there was some change from 24 to two hours.
Yes.
Right?
Not following.
Why don't you just tell me that that did not have any impact, that it was, it's the same thing?
Let me try this. In 2011 or 12, 32 inches over 24 hours. That generates the same result as the flows for two hours at the current maximum precipitation. What Rizzo did when they originally sent it in, sent it in with the, the 24-hour storm as it's now defined, which is 22 inches, which would have reduced it. And what DEP said, no, you're looking at the wrong storm criteria. It isn't the new 22 inches, which is now the maximum, not the 32. It's now this, this maximum precipitation in a two-hour period. You know what, what would probably be better for you, rather than to hold up the entire meeting, if, if you want to give us a call, I'd be more than happy to sit down and go through that in great detail.
Yeah, because I took it right from reviewing the docket.
No, no, and what you're reading is like...
There's like a lax ear, there's like a lax ear that this happened, right?
Yeah.
What is the two-hour criteria? What's the two-hour?
17.5 inches of rain.
And anybody, it's an engineer, knows that all of our other designs for anything that I can think of, roofs, buildings, storm drains, is never based on anything that's even approximate, even what, 25% of that type of storm?
What was it before 2011?
Well, it was always 33 inches in a 24-hour period.
So thank you very much.
Does anyone really agrees with this? Well, can I, is it fair to say that no one really agrees what this requirement is, even from an engineering standpoint? We all understand safety factors and all that. Does anyone actually agree?
No, it's absolutely bizarre.
It's excessive.
So I'm not crazy, then I'm up here and I'm not crazy.
Oh, no, no, it's excessive, because again, if you go back and look at, you know, go to the National Weather Site, go look at southwestern Pennsylvania, maximum rain event since the 1800s is 6.5 inches over 24-hour period. So this is, this is absurd.
That's exactly what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, but the fact of the matter is, we're stuck dealing with DEP. DEP regulates dam safety.
And there's no way that we're able to ever, as a township, get a third-party expert to counter this analysis?
No, no.
Very counterproductive.
No.
Consider it counterproductive.
What if we join other townships affected? You're going to, you're going to generate costs there.
Yeah.
Well, if you pay 50 to 80 thousand dollars to save potentially 5 to 6 million dollars, obviously it takes money to get an expert, but if everyone here feels that that's a bizarre, unreasonable engineering analysis, it's not wild that you consider thinking about that, because look at the burden we're in right now. I'm not saying I'm right, but I don't want it to be minimized that us challenging things that come down from the state.
I think it's, it's not an unreasonable, an unreasonable engineering analysis. I think what you have to look at is, the way that the DEP looks at a high-hazard dam is, is they say it has to handle the absolute worst case humanly imaginable, because there's the, if the, if the dam fails, there's the potential for loss of... And that's, because we've had the argument that, you know, in some lower classifications of dams, it's, it's half the PMP or half the probable maximum precipitation, or the 100-year event in lower categories of dams, but since we have what's called a high-hazard dam...
I'd love to connect you that offline too, because again, just reviewing the docket, they give you a table that shows the acre storage of the, and the height of the dam, and we were below the Bs, we were in the Cs, but we're classified as a B1.
Yeah, I'd love to sit down with you, yeah. But I don't, yeah, I don't want to do it here and take up the...
Yeah, and by the way, I'll just throw it out there, is I contacted Applied Weather Associates on the way over, I just called the owner, and just said, hey, you did this analysis, it's leading to a 5X multiple of what's required for us, it's very expensive. And he said, hey, we should look at doing a site-specific analysis. When things are looking too overwhelming for you guys, it's worth looking at this on a one-off basis. So if you want to contact him, though, he literally picks up his phone, he works with the state. It might be far-reaching, but it's like, it's worth trying. It seems like a very expensive thing, and it seems like no one agrees with what the analysis was. So I don't know if you've ever contacted him?
I've talked to them, yeah.
And you didn't go anywhere?
I haven't talked recently, but...
Okay. Well, that's something worth pursuing, because again, the DEP might be throwing this large thing to something that's very specific to our township, and we're all seeing the insane loss of...
That would be, you know, council would be willing to spend the money to do that. I'm, I'm just not sure. You, you run the risk of spending a lot of money to have the same answer, so I don't...
And butting heads with a bunch of bureaucrats.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask one more question?
Can you do me a favor and come up and write your name down?
Just one quick question.
Well, the secretary will, will have a problem regardless. The writing's going to take longer than the question.
So you want to, when you get done, you want to state your name?
I just, yeah, my name's Steve Wrens, A38 East McMurray Road. I just wanted to know, when were those estimates made for the 4 to 5 million? When did we get those estimates for the cost?
Well, that report...
Within the last couple of months.
Yeah. Last couple of months, okay.
Yeah.
Probably a lot higher now.
Yeah, they're going to keep going higher.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments on this matter? Okay, seeing none within audience comments, opportunity for a member of the audience to address council on a non-adjourn item for up to five minutes. So anybody that wishes to address council this time? Okay, seeing none in unfinished business, which there is none, so new business, the first will be the award of contract for the purchase of rock salt through the Chicago contract.
So on June 30th, Chicago Purchasing Alliance open bids for supply rock salt to the member communities of the alliance. The, the price that was received, the low bid was $88.96. This is 11.5% increase over what we paid last year. One of the things that the township does is to award two contracts for purchase of rock salt, one through this program and one through the coast... rock salt, one through this program and one through the coasters program, and that one will be coming to you later. It's gonna be my recommendation that Peter Township Council award a contract to Cargill Incorporated to supply rock salt for the...
I'll make the motion that we award the contract to Cargill Inc. at the price per ton of 88.96 cents.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry six, nothing. Should be award of a contract for parking installation of the library.
Move we reject all bids for the installation of carpet in the library and direct the manager to rebid the project.
So, second.
Okay, and that's because we didn't receive...
We didn't receive bid bonds, and quite honestly, we don't know the low bidder and normally have bid bonds on the evidence of the fact that it's unreliable.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry six, nothing. Item C will be a change order for a contract with the Calusi Chevrolet for a pickup truck that's been on order for quite some time.
We have, we have four small pickup trucks on orders since December 20th. We have got indications that one of them is available and being shipped. It's being shipped with a six-cylinder engine instead of a four. There's an upcharge of $1,250. I'm recommending that we, we approve that change order for fear that if we don't, we'll be into next year's pricing, and God only knows when we'll end up getting the truck, so.
I was a little confused by your report. So we're going to six-cylinder on all of them, correct?
No. We're buying fours, but one of them ended up being a six, right? And we're still under, overall, we're still under what we budgeted for those four trucks, right? Now, in your recommendation, you say change order amount of 1,500. Is it, is it 1,250?
It's 1,250. It's 1,250.
Okay, so I'll make a, a motion that we authorize a change, that we approve the change order in the amount of $1,250 to Calusi Chevrolet for the purchase of four Chevrolet Colorado pickup trucks, one being a six-cylinder.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in the second, all, or any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry six, nothing.
So how do we get to decide who gets to drive the six-cylinder?
Mark and Ed fight it out.
We're having a page match.
Yeah.
Okay, next item will be the authorization of appropriate township officials to execute the municipal automobile theft and motor vehicle insurance fraud intergovernmental agreement between the Pennsylvania State Police and the township for 2022 and 2023.
As council will recall, last year in October, council authorized participation in this intergovernmental agreement. In your docket, there's a, an evaluation that was supplied by Chief Grimes as to the value of this. And what this is is simply a renewal for the upcoming year. What it means is that all costs associated with a police officer who's assigned to that task force, including his vehicle, are all reimbursed by the state of Pennsylvania.
I'm assuming we did, we did receive reimbursement for the, for this year?
We've received reimbursement for the first quarter, yes.
I'll make a motion that we authorize township officials to execute the intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the purpose of permitting the Peters Township Police Department to participate in the municipal automobile theft slash motor vehicle insurance fraud task force. And I would assume the, the township official would be the manager. Is that you?
I think so.
Okay. That's my motion. I'll second.
Okay, with a motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry six, nothing.
Maybe they could find us some four-cylinder Colorados and...
There we go.
Okay, next item will be a request to eliminate traffic islands from Hamlet of Springdale, Phase Three.
So Benjamin Marcus Holmes, on behalf of themselves, as well as the Homeowners Association, has requested that we eliminate traffic islands as shown on the plan. We've reviewed this with the planning department and the engineering department, and we concur with their recommendation. We have these similar kind of islands that were, had been installed at the entrance, and they create a problem because they, of getting trucks and that around. What we'd like to do, though, is to leave the, the asphalt in this, as it's already installed in this widened configuration, so that in fact, in the future, there is a concern with traffic calming that we may be able to use this as a solution. The thing that we want to do also at some point, this is actually shown in our set of specifications as a, an approved method of traffic calming. These islands, we think, tend to work on straightaways. We just don't think they work in the middle of intersections, so...
Why were they part of the plan to begin with then?
Well, because if you recollect, we have been looking at different ways of doing traffic calming, and this was an alternative to speed humps that we were looking at, at using. And again, I think the islands are okay, it's just not in this configuration at these intersections.
Is that a three-way stop sign at that intersection?
Um, I don't know whether it is or not, but it probably ought to be.
It's just a one-way.
Stop signs on Camden only.
So I would assume that you'd still have a calming effect on the straightaway traffic coming down Buckingham. I wouldn't think it'd be completely useless.
So...
It's not an area of high-speed traffic.
Well, I think one of the things that's noted in the management's report is that there is a limited number of residents that would not be able to make a left-hand turn into or out of their driveway. So if, even if that was a viable argument, the problem is that there's gonna be some people that, unless I'm wrong, that are still effective. I mean, that's what it says here.
Well, yeah, that's, see here, this, this person at that driveway would be into the middle of that island and...
Why didn't the builder take that into consideration when he built the house?
That's, that's a mistake.
You see, this, and this is what's starting to get under my skin, is that, you know, we make all these concessions. I mean, we put in these plans, these traffic calming, and this is at least the second time now, somebody's come back in and said, okay, we had the plan approved based on, with these traffic calming devices, but now somebody's driveway's gonna get blocked, or somebody doesn't want it in front of their house, please take it out. You know, I mean, I took a drive the other day up on Just About Farms, and I noticed that one of the houses they built, they put the driveway right in front of where one of those islands was supposed to be. They never came and asked us, half that island's gone. I mean, they just took it out and they put asphalt there because when the guy built the house, he put the driveway right in front of where the island was supposed to be. I mean, if we're gonna let people build house, I mean, it's not so applicable in this development because you don't have the quarter-acre lots. But if we're gonna be approving these plans, you know, that have these traffic calming, the, the, it should be the responsibility of the builder, when you build the house, you don't put the driveway where it's a situation where you're gonna come back six months later and say, I gotta move the island, you know?
You know, if I can, where I, I would agree with you is, I think it's not only the builder of the home and the developer. I think we have a responsibility, if we're gonna show these on the plans, to, to call out those lots on the recorded plan so that in fact, that, that everyone is put on notice with regard to...
That could have been a raised intersection, right? And then you wouldn't have that issue because it wouldn't obstruct anything. We, we did raised intersections up on Bar Hill, right?
We did, but I think the point is that we have a series of ways in which developers can put traffic calming within a new development. What we're finding is these islands at intersections and at entrances are the problem, where they're mid-block, raised crosswalks, raised intersections are not. We're just, this is fairly new, Frank, and we're learning as we go.
No, I understand that, Ed. It's just, to me, it bothers me because, you know, we approve these plans and, you know, we have the traffic engineer look at them and say, this is what needs to be done in order to make sure that people aren't speeding through here. And then, I mean, you know, my dad was a builder. I know certain times you lay a house out, it turns out you can't put the driveway where you thought it was gonna go because of topography or whatever, there's a sore line in the way or something like that. I mean, I guess, is, is there any resident here of that development as opposed to these things coming out?
Mark.
Now, you only have people here who are in favor of these... Okay, well then, I'm not, I'm not gonna make an issue about that. I mean, if everyone who lives there is fine with it, that's fine. My point, though, is just that, I mean, we need to be, when we're approving these plans going forward, we need to be more careful about where we're putting these things. Because, I mean, this is the second one in about three months where we've had to take one of these out. That, I'm just saying that. I mean, we should not be doing that because if we're letting people build houses on smaller lots and condensing the streets and all that, we should make sure these plans are approved with these things and locations where we're not taking them out a year later.
If you could come up.
I, I just, real quick, just kind of, one of the rotten builders you're talking about. I wanna roll back the hands...
Can you write your name down?
Yeah. So I wanna roll back the hands and time...
You need to tell us into the mic.
Yeah, speak your name as well and address.
One of the builder. Now, this is Mark Hoskins. Thank you. So I wanted to kind of roll back the hands of time a little bit so that, Frank, you understood kind of what happened. So when they were doing these traffic calming devices, it was kind of two things. We're trying to get curvilinear streets, and we were trying to be able to slow traffic down. And if you look right there on Buckingham, that is a real sharp curve coming around there, right? So your, your view is 300 feet or so at best. But if you look at that driveway, and when you see the DR is on Drive, and you come back to where the garage would be and between those two landscape beds, that's about 10 feet or 12 feet lower. So topography hurt you there. But I think is what really happened is, I believe the township was trying to do the right thing by saying, how do we slow down traffic? Well, we tried to do curvilinear streets. Well, you have a real good curve on this side and not on the other side, so you gotta try to take action to prevent both. And I think that it was a little bit aggressive on this one because it was new at the time, and, you know, Ed and everyone on there was trying to say, hey, let's do what's best. And, you know, I agreed. You know, I don't like it, but if it's gonna be best for the township, let's do it. But on that corner light, it doesn't work. That driveway, if you couldn't go over towards the Drive, you'd have to come out towards the word for Buck, the B of Buckingham. So you'd have to curve it in front. And then you're coming out at the other end of that island, which is, again, those islands, once the trees and shrubs start growing and kids start playing in them, it's kind of dangerous, you know, when they dart out into traffic. And so I think, you know, we did try to plan well for it. The guy that originally built the house, we planned well for it. But I think in this situation, near an intersection, you know, like Paul said, they don't work really well. And, and even like, forget about the driveway, when you come up Camden, if you try to make the turn, if you have a pickup truck with a small trailer, there's no possible way you can turn towards the word Buckingham without running through the island. It's not a possibility. I've tried it. And then if you get a delivery truck, you know, it's, or a furniture truck, it's done, you can't do it. And, you know, the people there really be, you know, running through their malt beds and everything, and then down at the bottom of the entrance, it's there. But it's not a very good one either because when you're turning off of Bauer Hill, you know, you can do it with a car, but if you have a big truck, you know, like a 24-foot delivery truck, you can't do it without running through the island. And we made everything to the specs, plus maybe a foot wider than it's supposed to be, but you can't get in there at all. So, you know, I would say just, you know, I shoot myself in the foot here, I think Peters does a really good job with planning. I don't like all the walls in front of us when we're trying to develop, but they do a good job with it in general. It's just a good job that everyone in that office has done. But I think in this one, it's just really tough. It's really tough, it's not safe. I don't know how you would ever get a fire truck in and out of there if you were blocked at the other end, you know? You'd have to have someone come out and cut down trees and landscaping and everything so you could get down the street. So that's, it's really not a residence in a car, it's everything that comes after that that's a problem. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark.
That, that was sort of like that whispering pines. Remember Ted Taylor was gonna, was supposed to improve that island, and then we realized that like moving vans and everything else, just driving right over, and so we just let them make it low and asphalt it or something like that. I mean, I think there's just situations where it, it, you know, it works in some situations where it doesn't work.
Could you come up to the podium? Name and address and state it as well.
We've watched the routine now.
While Cal's writing this down, you know, there's actually a traffic island up in the older part of this neighborhood, which works very well, but it's, it's a straightaway there. So it does slow that traffic down there quite nice, so...
Good evening, Kyle McGee, township officials, council members. I am on the Hamlet of Springdale Home Association Board as asked to be here. I know there's a number of my fellow residents here. I, I think, I'm not gonna reiterate it and take up council's time unless there's any questions, but it's not gonna work as currently proposed. I think the best evidence of that is if you go to the bottom of Camden Drive and you look at the intersection with Bauer Hill Road, there is that small island there, there's tire tracks all over it. We have not, as a homeowners association, done anything to try to landscape that. We're gonna keep, keep putting that off until at least the construction is done and then we see where we're at. But it's not just the construction trucks, it's delivery trucks, it's all, and so, you know, I, I certainly think that, I have little kids, one of them's in the back right now, I don't want people speeding on Buckingham Drive or any of the other roads of this development at all. I don't think it's currently a problem. I know there's, I don't think anyone disagrees, but, you know, the HOA board voted, I'm the representative that is here to communicate that. We support the resolution, and we ask that you all vote to approve it to us not to have to put that over there. And I don't think any of my fellow homeowners that are here disagree with that. So I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Is your opinion changed?
Yeah, no, like I said, if the residents of the neighborhood are fine with it, you know, my only concern, like I said, is I'm, just bothers me when we take these things out after they're in, the plan is approved. But that being the case, I will myself make...
Another call in?
Oh, sorry.
I guess I gotta sign into... Hi, I'm Franklin Costin. I'm one of the residents, and all I want to do is voice my support for homeowners. The islands aren't gonna be a help, they're gonna be a detriment. And it's gonna cause a traffic problem, it's gonna try, cause yards prob, yard problems. And as everybody before me said, if you go down, when you come in on Camden, look at the tire tracks in the beds across the island, it's just, just not a great idea. And that, all I'm gonna do is sign my name and say thank you for letting me say my piece.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you make that motion?
Yes, fine. I'll make a motion that the traffic islands as shown on Hamlet of Springdale, Phase Three Plan of Lots not be installed, but that the widened paving remain.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I recuse myself. Can 501, why not?
Ed, that being the case, maybe we, and I, I've noticed that also with that island at Bauer Hill Road, and the same thing can be set up in Just About Farms. And we need to look at these things in the future because if they're not gonna work, there's no reason for them to be on this place.
Absolutely, we recognize that, there are fire trucks we have to deal with, public works, removal, we've got to make sure it works for everybody.
Gary, just for the record, I do live in the neighborhood, I have no financial advantage for this, and, you know, township solicitor said it was fine to vote on that.
Hey, Ted. I'm already signed in. Can you come up to the mic of Bauer Hill? Can we get rid of that one also? And I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean, if you look at it, you, there, there's no way that a fire truck could ever get in there. And it looks like, there's always mud on the streets because everybody, every truck that comes in here, I'm talking about construction trucks, we'll take our blame when we do it. But I'm talking about UPS deliveries, FedEx deliveries, anything that's bigger than a 16-foot truck, they run through the island, regular residents.
We just approved elimination of traffic calming islands in Phase Three. That, that is part of Phase Three.
Yeah, but it's not included in the request and you would, council would have to take that.
Yeah, that is part of Phase Three. That's correct. But like the one at the entrance is, it's gorgeous, you know, I mean, it's fantastic.
Same situation.
And the one halfway in, where you went from Phase One to Two, that one works great because it's on a straightaway. And that's really where you're trying to slow the traffic, not on a sharp curve.
Well, wait, are you, Mr. Hoskins, are you doing the final paving course now? Are you going to be, is that island at the entrance going to be part of this now too?
Yeah.
Well, then we might as well take it out too. Can we do, we probably, we have to put on the agenda for next.
You can do whatever you want.
Does it have to be on the agenda or can we modify?
You can just modify what you're doing here.
Fine. I'll make a motion that we take out the-
Who's taking it out?
Or not?
On Buckingham and Camden in Hamlet Phase Three.
There you go. There's my motion.
Second. So we're clear the developer's going to remove this.
Right.
About George Paul.
And you can do that. I just won't pay.
I'll be a second.
Can we motion in a second? All favor say aye.
Aye.
I recuse myself. Five zero one, coming out. Final item will be discussion concerning the settlement, sale of township building property. I'm telling you right now, I'm voting no on this.
Okay, that's fine. We have been approached by, in two separate cases, about a request to, for the township to transfer property. And I wanted to bring these in front of council, in part to find out whether there's any interest and also to have some common understanding about what's involved in that process, if in fact we were to do that. So the first request is for a small tract of land that is part of property that was transferred to the township when Colony Manor Plan Two went in.
That is this plan.
There is a small section that was intended to provide access to the township to an open space parcel. It's also in that parcel, there are stormwater management facilities. We do not, we have not in the past, nor will we in the future, use this 15-foot section to access that parcel. We have, have access from the other side of that parcel now. So the question that was raised by the adjacent property owner in-
Get that to me.
Yep. Is whether or not the township would consider transferring ownership to him. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the threshold question. If in fact there's any interest in that, we need to talk about what the process of doing that is.
You know, Paul, when I looked at this, and I can't find it right now, but I, wasn't the easement in here, the easement language?
Well, there was, this is-
It said that if, if it stopped using that, whatever it was given for, that the land reverts back to the grantor, which would have been the builder, not us, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Well, but we're not taking, we're not taking the position that the township has abandoned it by-
No, I understand that, but it says, in the event the township of Peters ever ceases using said parcel as open space, as defined in Paragraph One hereof, or in the event the township of Peters violates the covenant of Paragraph Two, then the interest acquired by the township shall cease and determine, and title to said parcel shall revert to the grantor it successes and assigns. So if we don't keep it, there's nothing we can do to it. It has to be, remain open space. Because if we don't, then it's going to revert back to the grantor. We can't give them anything. I mean, that's the way I read it. I don't know, Frank, did you see that?
I agree with you, Frank. The same thing came to my mind. I think that, I don't know that we can sell the one. I think that the neighbor's recourse, we could abandon it and then he can file a quiet title action against the developer and get it that way. But I don't, I don't see how, we can give him a quit claim deed, but I don't see how it's worth anything because I think Frank, that's, I read the exact same way.
Well, I think the problem you have with selling that strip to, I'm not sure which side you live on, sir.
Do you live on, right inside?
Yeah. Well, is, if, you know-
That was Harmon, wasn't it? Or who developed calling that?
This is for something for council needs to consider. What, you know, we're a home ruled charter, so we have to decide and implement procedures if we are going to sell. You know, do we have to give the ability for people on both sides to purchase? Frank, would this then constitute an unopened alley or some sort of, you know, if it reverts back to the developer, there may be an argument that people on both sides would own the middle of this strip. I'm not sure it was ever an alleyway.
Yeah, but it's not because it's not defined as a paper street. It looks like it's just a right of one.
It is. And I gather though, even if we had the ability to sell, could we pick which side to sell it to?
I think you could because it's not, I think, as I recall, the way the law reads, if it's an unopened street, then it goes to the center. But if it's a easement or a strip of land that's not dedicated as, or not illustrated on the subdivision plan as a paper street, then you can sell it to whoever you want.
Well, and that's where we don't really have the procedures in place. I don't necessarily disagree with you. I think we should look to adopt some sort of rule. Because what if we had the adjacent property owner coming in saying, sell it to me?
Oh, right. Then it would be who's willing to pay more for it.
Well, then that's the question. Is it, do you put a, are a P out for it? Or do you just say, you know, we'll sell it to this person? That's the question.
This came up a few years back with Briar, Briar Cliff, if I remember correctly. And I think we came to the conclusion that this is a lot of township time and expense that would have to go into this for no benefit to the township. And I just think it's a bad precedent to sell off land, especially the next one where we're talking about it being developable for a small development. I don't think we have to develop every single piece of property in this township. So I'm one to-
Yeah, the difference here though, John, is like Frank said, you've got to write a reversion here. So I think if we abandon it, you know, if we just did an ordinance abandoning it.
Well, right. And even then, well, I guess-
Then it reverts to the developer. And then if this gentleman wants to pursue a quiet title action again. Can I ask you, sir, have you been maintaining that all these, have you been treating it as part of your yard all these years or something?
Part of it?
I've been maintaining, cutting.
I'm not going to give you legal advice.
But even in your letter though, you tell us that your neighbor, can you, one second? Even, even in your letter though, you tell us that the neighbor, the other neighbor is actually encroached upon that as well. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I said that.
Yes, well, what you had indicated to me-
The letter speaks for itself.
Let's just leave that alone. I mean, the only time I can recall ever doing that, doing something like this, and I don't even think we sold it, I think was, remember that guy built the pool part of it was over, public space? And so we had to do a, they did a subdivision and we flipped the piece. We swapped property.
That, that was in lieu of making, you know, the pool stay on, on open space, you know.
In some reason to get rid of property, obviously, is maintenance and not use, you know, in terms of cutting the grass, things like that. But I just think, big picture, we should have a procedure as to how you're going to undertake that. Second-class township code has this whole process for this. We don't, because we don't have to follow that. But just some food for thought, think about, should we just be able to sell whoever we want? Do we put out for bid or what do we want to do?
I think Bill Johnson wrote, I think that's, I think you were thinking, Bill Johnson wrote a memo or something? Because we had that issue once.
Bill Johnson's opinion was, is that if you take a plan like this and that that open space was, was created and transferred to the township, everyone in that plan has an interest in it now.
Correct.
And that it would take a release from each of those property owners to be able to transfer any piece of property to someone else. And as a result of that, and the whole time I've been here, we have never sold or transferred a piece of property because you can never get that many releases. I mean, you've got 30-some properties here. You've got, probably have 60-some people who need to sign a release.
Now, see, I don't, I don't agree with that conclusion. I don't think that you have to get everyone to sign a release. But that being said, here we are again, like, you know, Gary said, we're going to spend, you know, we're going to pay John, John's associate to spend 20 hours trying to figure out the answer to that question. And, you know, to what end? We're not going to sell the property for that amount of money. So I agree with Gary. I think we just, as far as this one goes, I'd have no problem if we did an ordinance abandoning it. And if this gentleman wants to pursue a quiet title action against the developer, more power to him. Because I agree with Frank, we don't have the authority to sell it in the, in the first place. Because if we abandon it, it refers to the developer.
Does the abandonment language require an affirmative act? Or can we just take the position it's abandoned?
I think, the way I read it, we can just take the position that it's abandoned. We just issue an order, we can just, you know, pass an ordinance that says that the township, you know, the township hereby affirms that we've made no use of this property and we hereby abandon our rights to it. And then it reverts.
But I would be curious whether that gets you out from under the dedicated and donated property act.
I think the reason of probably, what is this language?
Right.
This is unique because the language has a reversion clause in it.
Right.
In the grant. Most grants are just outright to us. There's no reversionary interest to the-
Well, we've been maintaining the property. Are we cutting the grass up there?
No.
Then you're, according to this easement, if you look at three, it says, what I was reading from before, it says, here, or in the event the township violates the covenant of Paragraph Two hereof. Well, if you go to Paragraph Two, it says the grantee, meaning the township, shall maintain said parcel of land as open space, free and clear of all rubbish, trash, nuisances, and other conditions that would constitute a violation of any ordered statute and regulation. I mean-
That low standard the township's done because, you know, we don't have violations on our own property.
If the parcel were owned by an individual, if a parcel didn't cut his grass and it got high, it would be a violation of the covenant.
But that isn't what this is.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, but see like, our out on this is the right of revert because we can just walk away from it. Let it go back to the developer. And if this gentleman wants to get an attorney and, you know, file a quiet title action against the developer, he can get title, because we can't give him title anyway.
The problem we have-
Because if we wanted to give a D, we can't give it.
No, we don't have good title in this instance. But I think the problem you have, and we see this in the oil and gas world, is you're looking back at plans where the developer had gone dead and out of business. It reverts back to you basically, but nobody, and it just sits. And that doesn't negate his ability to file, you know, a quiet title action.
You have to advertise and all that stuff.
Makes it a little more troublesome.
Does it cost money? Don't we have to provide some type of description about what's, this is that we're abandoning?
Oh, yeah.
We don't have all of parcel A disappeared.
Oh, absolutely, we would, yeah.
Didn't you want to retain a part of, isn't there some easement or something that you wanted to retain so that-
Well, that's the other thing. It's one of the, the things about this, and I don't know how this works with this idea of abandoning it. There is an interest on behalf of the sanitary authority to have an easement across this property. At the very top of it, there is a manhole that they'd like to be able to have access to in the future. And, and they would like to be able to have an easement across this.
Do they have an easement now?
They do not have an easement now. But we would, although this is confusing to me because the sanitary authority says they do not have an easement. But on this plot plan, it refers that section as an easement. And I don't know, an easement in, in behalf of who, I don't know. But the sanitary authority, even if that was their easement, would prefer an easement across our parcel so that in fact they could get equipment up into that site.
But how can we get, I don't think we could give them an easement anyway.
No.
Because we've been giving them an easement over our easement, right? Right. That's exactly right. Because if, if we give them an easement and then we abandon it-
But it does say per recorded plan. Maybe if you pulled the plan, the plan shows it's a utility easement or-
So again, there's no benefit us doing this. I don't know why we're harping on this.
I'm being persuaded to go along with Gary here. I-
I, I think just, my concern is in the future, if you do want to do this, that we have some process. Do we-
That's okay.
Yeah, we should do that. But again, like I said, I mean, I, I mean, I'll leave it to, I mean, I have no problem doing an ordinance, abandoning it, if it doesn't cost us anything. I mean, that's fine. Because if we make no use of it, then this gentleman wants to take care of it and maintain-
How do we protect the sanitary authorities' right to get up there? That's the problem. There's no mechanism for it.
They would have to get, like, at some point, it may fall to a prescriptive easement or something like that. Or he's going to say, once in place.
Yeah, but we could just avoid that whole thing if we just don't do anything.
But what does that-
Well, if he took us to court tomorrow and made the argument that we've abandoned already, I mean, would we defend or would the, would the court say we have it? I don't know.
But how does, where does that man, what line does that manhole go to that they have no easement to get to it?
They have easements behind this. The, I don't know if I can, the sewer line actually runs behind this property. So it's up in this area. And there's, it comes down this way and goes this way. And there's a manhole right here.
But they can get to it through an existing easement, is what you're saying. So this would just be more of an easement of convenience.
This would be, this would be the preferred easy way to get to it.
More convenient. Yeah.
Is there a motion you want to make?
No, I have no motion to make. I, I guess I want to-
Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
Oh, it's plain to hear from Mr. Lindner, the resident. He wanted to speak.
Thank you.
I would like to.
I've already signed in. My name is Phil Lindner and I live at 109 Lexington. I've lived there since 1995. And that strip of land, the house next to us, for the whole period I was there, was really under maintained tragically. It's since been sold. But that strip, my wife and I have mulched it, picked the weeds. It, there's pictures of it that I've sent to Paul and Ryan. But it needs some work to actually be to community standards. And like I said, we've picked it, we've mulched it. There was a spruce tree there that was dead. There's a disease going around. And Davy Tree said, that thing's going to fall down, could hit your house. So there's some maintenance that needs to be done to it. So I kind of viewed this as a liability to the township because it needs to be maintained. It serves no purpose, I don't think anymore. Because way back when, Mike Silvestri and Pete Overkasser came and they said, hey, we'd like to access those ponds. We don't want to cut all those trees down. Would you let us do that through your property? Because they came through my side yard, which is actually somewhat township property. And then they went down behind my house, through my property. And they did that three or four times. So they since have built the road off a bunker back to those storm drains. So they have a gate, there's a gate there, there's access, a road is built. So I thought if the township was no longer getting any benefit from the property, I'd like to purchase it and take care of it. I don't plan to build anything there. I just want to make it look pretty and nice and respectable.
I, I think the problem that they've discussed is if, if we weren't taking care of it, if we weren't using, if it's lost its public purpose, then it would, we'd lose our ownership rights. We couldn't give it to you, we couldn't sell it to you anyway. So, and if we sold it to you, we would lose our ownership rights upon that sale. You know, in terms of losing its public purpose, it would revert back, I think, under that agreement. So.
Yeah, I think, sir, I think your best, I mean, your best bet is, you know, if we abandoned and you get a lawyer and you sue the developer, you could probably get title to it that way. But we, even if we wanted to give you title, we can't give it to you.
Well, I appreciate that. And I just, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak about this. I'd like to follow any process you would suggest if you wanted to competitive bid it or whatever. I'm fine with that. But if you tell me you can't sell it, I guess you can't sell it.
Could you rent it?
The township doesn't own it outright. Could you lease it?
That's what, that was my question.
Yeah.
If you can't sell it.
I think the one thing that the, how council would feel about this, but I think you could enter into some type of arrangement.
Yeah, but if we lease it to this gentleman, then we're no longer using it for open space and it reverts anyway. Well, but the reality of it, the developer's never going to come forward and, you know, actually try to enforce that reversion clause again.
And the township's never asked you to move off that property, have they?
And if you gave them permission, we could-
Well, I mean, it's my, it's my side yard. Part of it is my side yard. And it goes into this, if there was a picture, it'd be really helpful. Considering the street, there's overgrown bushes, trees that are diseased. There's a bunch of O.C. orange trees. There's a new neighbor at 104 who has a huge limb from your property. It's hanging over his property. He has, J.K. might have looked at it. Did J. miss that? I think it's his name.
Mija.
Sorry.
Mija, yeah.
But he might have looked at it because the owner's made a request. It's hanging over his backyard. And I'm trying to make your problem my problem. I'll take care of that.
Yeah, to me, well, the absence of that clause, it has to revert. As soon as we quit using it, it's no longer ours. And so-
I, I realize we have a bunch of attorneys, but-
Sometimes too many.
I think if we gave them permission to use the property under some arrangement, and at the same time, we could grant the sanitary authority the easement that they, they want. And I think that accomplishes everything. I realize the concern about the language and the reverter and that, but-
What's the size of this parcel? So it's 15 foot by 235.
15 foot, yeah.
Why's it, why's the, did the rant say 5.8 acres?
It's the entirety. It's the entirety of the parcel.
All parcel.
On the other side.
But yeah, so here's, you know, my mailbox is kind of right here. And this is, this is actually yard right here. And then there's this, there's an island that's poorly maintained, entry, stuff I'd like to trim, take care of. The neighbor here always thought it was his. And I was just kind of very respectful to him and showed him the plan. You know, it's very clear that it's township property. So he acted like he didn't understand that. So I just, I lived with that for 27 years, which I now regret.
That goes back 200 and some yards.
35.
And so that lot behind you.
Is township property. Parcel A is township property.
That's my property corner. There is an easement here. And the reason I know that is because when I built the shed, I had to build it like five foot clear of that easement. So it's actually, instead of being back here, it's right here.
Sure.
So that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I mean, Paul, I think the township has the ability to, albeit it may be fleeting, to work with the authority to give an easement. I mean, because long as we say it's ours-
Yeah, we can, you're right. The thing is if we ever, you know, if we ever were to abandon it, then the easement goes away.
I wonder if the, it would ever be abandoned with that easement. You know, that it always has that public purpose, albeit not ours, but the authorities. That if that line allows us to make the argument that it's forever ours at that point, they could never revert short of pulling that out. But I still don't think we could ever indeed-
I think you could, you could say you abandoned it except for the easement, which is being maintained for a open space. You know, you could do that maybe. I mean, I'm trying to be creative here.
Yeah, I mean, maybe what we could do is we could say that, you know, we abandoned it for all other purposes other than access, never use it for access. I guess then, you know, it's-
So is it worth tabling this discussion to look into?
But it still forces him to court, right?
Right, yeah.
We can't give him a deed.
No, we can give him a quick claim deed, but it's not worth the paper it's written on.
I'm reluctant to sue the township.
No, you wouldn't be suing the township, you'd be suing the developer.
Are they still around?
Well, it doesn't matter. But I guess you have to answer the threshold question is, is there an interest in transferring the property?
No.
No.
I think if we have a resident here that wants to maintain it and beautify it and it's not going to affect the township, I would be in favor of it.
As would I.
And I can tell you, we'll probably see the guy that we turned down from Briar Cliff here at the next meeting wanting to be a parcel as well.
Well, if we have three-
Is it the same exact-
It's got, you and me, we're going to, it's going to be three, three, so it's not going to, you have to wait till-
That's why I just recommend tabling it, because I think there's more discussion that needs to be had.
Why don't we just table it then until-
Make a motion, Tom.
I make a motion to table or request for, sorry, I don't have this ready for me, concerning the township sale for the Lexington Drive property.
I'll second.
Any other comments from the audience on this? Okay, motion and second to table, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Five, one.
And as far as the next piece goes, I agree with Gary. I think we should hold on to that. Number one, because of the topography, anyone who's going to develop in there is going to do a lot of cutting and filling and quite honestly, having that little bit of open space, those woods there behind 19 doesn't hurt anybody. So I'll make a motion that we decline any offers to sell that piece.
Second. Okay, motion second on that one. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that, you know, this is a piece of property that we're never going to use and the township's not deriving any benefit whatsoever from, where if you could sell it, it would be on the tax rolls and we would get taxed for, well, not forever, until they eliminate it. And I don't, I don't, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, if somebody brings a plan in and it meets the thing, then we do it. I mean, I think we're doing a disservice, in my opinion, not making it on the tax rules, unless there's some need down the future that we may need that for something.
No, it's actually, the origin of this is actually, I think, kind of interesting. This ended up in the Washington County Tax Line Bureau, I think in 1955, and someone bought it thinking they had a parcel that they could sell and they couldn't. So in December 29th of 1959, they donated it to the township and I, you know, for obvious tax purposes, and so the township's held on to that piece of property.
He used to live up on the other side of the-
So Frank, where do you draw the line with this? Are you going to eliminate the need for a developer to set aside open space and future developments if you don't think that there's any use for that parcel and you prefer to see it on the tax rolls?
No, but that's different. That's a development and a development has houses and they need open space. This is just a piece of ground that we own and it could be developed and we can get taxes out of it. And I think that's a benefit. I mean, I'm not-
Is this residential, commercial?
It's a residential section. There, you can see there's a home right up above it. This is, the one thing about it, it's a very difficult piece of property.
Yeah, look at the contours, look how steep it is.
Yep. I'm just saying.
It's right beyond Zaba's there. Zaba's parking lots up in the left corner.
We've looked at it on several road tours and-
So you made a motion.
I made a motion that we-
Any further discussions, the council or the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. We're not selling that one.
But the one thing I did hear you say, we'd like to work with a solicitor to come up with an understanding about if in fact there ever was a parcel that we wanted to sell, what the rules are, because right now, we don't know those, so.
No, we should absolutely have that ready.
Yeah, we should have that done.
The second-class township code is pretty stringent. I think we can walk away from that a little bit and we need to, in terms of how we do it, but-
Paul, just out of curiosity, when this individual deeded this property to the township, there was no restriction in the deed as to what we could do with it?
Nope. All it said in the deed, in fact, I think the deeds in your docket, at the beginning, it says to do something nice, you know, in essence, to do something nice for the township, we need it for-
It says in the future-
For the future welfare of that-
For the people of Peters Township. And selling it would be for the-
Well, and that's, and that's why you can't, I think.
Because no one's over there camping or hiking on it.
Yeah, but my point is it's a nice buffer between, you know, old Washington and the commercial district there. And if someone's going, someone were to develop that, they're going to, you know, they're going to clear out the entire parcel in order to grade it out, you'd have to do that, unless you put out, you could maybe put one house right in the corner there, you know, otherwise you're going to have to take the whole thing out and level it out. To me, it just seems that, I like the buffers there, so.
We've got it.
Here we go.
Payroll bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills, find them to be in order, I move they be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, nothing. Not seen any correspondence, anything that anybody wants to discuss from the minutes? Miscellaneous?
So Allison, how are those shake hog meetings going this year?
They're auxiliary.
Aren't they Zoomed out? Can you do it by Zoom, which is a lot better?
Oh, well, that's just-
That's one in person, here.
Okay. Want to go over either the miscellaneous?
Yes, I just wanted to bring this map up. We had recent discussions with AT&amp;T. They are moving forward with 5G locations along East McMurray Road at the crossroads, at the middle school, at the, East McMurray, at the new high school, at Thomas Road, and then we're trying to work with them, they're interested in doing something near Palapetts or Maplewood. So, in fact, one of the things about Maplewood I should tell you is that this Wednesday, those trees that are on the edge of the property, they're going to be coming down and that may facilitate putting in a pole needed for this.
They put one at the intersection down there?
It's, one, it's going to be at Thomas Road.
Will that benefit the people in that, the high-rise people that have bad, can't get service?
Well-
The waters.
I'll say them people.
The waters-
I never remember the name.
The waters had been negotiated with AT&amp;T to put, in essence, a tower on top of their building and those negotiations fell through, so that's not, I don't think that's going to occur. What is on the verge of happening, we're like three or four sentences away from having an agreement to be able to place the tower up next to the football field and they have told us that the nature of that facility will actually solve the problem over at the waters, so I don't know.
There you go.
Yeah, so.
And what about Verizon? Where are we with that?
We are nowhere with Verizon. I can't even get Verizon on the phone, so I don't know the answer to that. They have at the, at the old high school, there is a 5G cell tower there and that's Verizon's there, but I have not been able to get Verizon to speak to us, so.
I mean, on my way here to this meeting tonight, I dropped a call to my family three times.
Oh, I, I believe it.
You need to speak to 18 seconds.
I may do a mass exodus, push for a mass exodus of Verizon if we don't get it figured out.
Yeah.
It's gotten worse too. I never used to drop calls in my house, but there's like, sort of, like in the last couple of months, there's parts of my house that I can no longer make calls in.
And you're on the top of the hill.
Yeah, I know, and I'm, yeah, I'm in-
Paul, didn't you make a comment before that once a tower goes up, another provider can then join in?
Well, and that's part of the discussion on this tower that we're doing in the park. My initial discussions with them is we wanted enough capacity that it not only be AT&amp;T and the sports lighting for that field, but we wanted enough to be able to have the other provider in there. And when I say that we're down to a couple sentences, one of those sentences has to do with creating enough space on that pole to be able to have someone else in there, so.
I think Mr. Ross talked with the attorney from Verizon and he seemed to be interested in talking, so maybe we'll have to have him, contact him again.
That would, that would be great, because like I said, we can't get anybody from Verizon to speak to us. The other thing that I wanted to talk about under miscellaneous work on the fire station is progressing. This is what the site looks like now. But Mr. Tovett has a report in here with regard to the progress on the site. The thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is twofold. One, there was a telephone pole that is located just out of this picture. It was there based upon an easement issued by the prior property owner in 1940, so we're having to pay to have that moved. It has Verizon Fios equipment on that pole, so that expense, actually, there's a check-in tonight for that, it's about $6,500 to move that. The other thing is when they, when they dug for this foundation, they hit unsuitable soils and so they had to overexcavate this and backfill it with suitable soils, which had to be trucked in. We're in the process of trying to come to an understanding about what we were owed and what is in fact an extra, but you're looking at a, the other thing that happened was they found three tanks on this site. One was a septic tank, two were, two other types of holding tanks, and again, which caused them to have to overexcavate. You're, this is going to be a significant change order. You're probably, could have a change order in the vicinity of about $50,000 for that work, so. But now it's out of the ground and that should be the end of that, so.
In the agreement of sale, was there any disclosure that they were, there weren't any tanks or anything like that?
It was a commercial sale, so it wouldn't, it wasn't a requirement.
Oh, that's right. You don't have to do any- Any items for the next agenda?
Well, I wanted to address a couple, a miscellaneous item here.
Mr. Lewis won a contest and he wants to share his winnings with us.
Now, to the benefit of the community, I talked at our last meeting and the police report identified that we had, as I would recall, like 70 unsolved fraud cases this year in Peters Township. And I went and talked to the police chief in conjunction with what I consider to be a fraud claim, you know, being presented to me, and he actually indicated that there have been several residents in our community that have been taken in by some of these. And I want to share the fact that while I had one of these about two months ago, I got one over the weekend. It includes a personal check made out to me in the amount of $2,675. And it says, "Congratulations, you've won. Please call this number." And I don't know that neither the police chief or I know exactly what the methodology of this scam, how it unfolds, but there's some speculation that if you were to cash this check, they would potentially get access to your bank account, in the fact that it would get returned for insufficient funds. It wouldn't be a good check. And of course, then the next thing is it says, "We, in order to give you your $250,000 you've won, you'll have a processing fee and insurance fee of $2,000 that you'll have to pay." So the first one came through to me as if it was a publisher's clearinghouse program. This one, and that one was mailed to me out of a New York City post office, this one came out of Toronto, Canada. It just says North American Financial, but I'm only bringing this up to the fact that we have had four or five residents that have suffered already in being taken in by these. It's obvious to me that, you know, there are a number of them that are coming in. They look, I think I passed this check around to most people here at the table and they all, boy, it looks real. Well, it sure as hell does, but you ask yourself, the letter comes from Toronto, if I remember right, the bank is in Orlando, Florida, and, you know, what's going on? So I shredded the last one, I'm going to shred this one, but I'm wanting to share as an alert that we all need to be cognizant of the fact that there are people trying to separate us from our money. Thank you.
Anything else for the next agenda?
Where are we with the latest landslide on Hidden Valley?
Good question. I haven't thought about that.
Soil boring for taken, the drill rig was out two weeks ago, so they're analyzing that and Gateway's going to give us a report on what they think the issue is and what the fix will be.
All right. Thanks.
How about the, was there a water break on Springdale?
Yes. There was a 30-inch water line that broke, that repair is complete, and I don't know what the status of the repairs to the road are at this point.
I think it's open to traffic. I'm not sure if the wearing course has been put on, but the brake's fixed, the road's repaired and it's open to traffic.
Thanks.
Just a reminder to council, there's a next meeting on the 25th, there's a public hearing. Council indicated they wanted to meet at seven o'clock to accommodate that. Also, just so you know, I will be on vacation that week and Ryan will be here for that
I asked Mr. Lauer, wondering where we had left the concept of doing a road tour or a township tour. It seemed to me the last conversation we had about it was it would have to be later in the spring, after sporting events, perhaps slowed down a little bit, but is it our intent to have one or are we committed to?
At this point, I would say that the road program already underway. I don't, I don't see that there's much benefit right now.